I know, trying to get it all together. Okay, so good evening, welcome to the 5 o'clock Tulsa City Council meeting. You can view this meeting on our Facebook page, our YouTube channel, which is pretty fancy, or Cox Channel 24, or at TGovOnline.org. Assisting the council tonight are Jack Blair, City Attorney Lori Doring, Secretary to the Council, and Brandon Worley, Council staff. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, please see Brandon over here to request a request to speak card. You have to fill it out, and you have to request that before the item has been read. So please join us in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under love and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all may be seated. People wishing to speak on agenda items are limited to five minutes total per meeting. Public input is a time for members of the public to provide insight on the agenda item. Due to the meeting format, public input is not a time for discussion for a question and answer period. All comments should be relevant to the agenda item and directed to the council. We're using an electronic timing system. You have a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Yellow light means you have 30 seconds left, red light means you're overtime. Please keep the podium area railings and aisles free from recording devices and tripods. Recording equipment and accessories, including tripods, must be set up in the media center as posted on tonight's agenda. Certain items are subject to consideration and possible approval, adoption, denial, amendment, or revision. I call this meeting to order, please call the roll.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Here.
Counselor Archie?
Here.
Counselor Dutton?
Here.
Counselor Bellis?
Here.
Counselor Gilbert?
Here.
Counselor Bengal?
Here.
Counselor Decter Wright?
Here.
Counselor Lakin?
Here.
Counselor Bush?
Here.
Item 1, receipt and filing of minutes. A, minutes of regular meeting held at 4:00 PM on May 21st, and B is at 5:00 PM on May 21st. Do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers for item 1.
Any council discussion?
Move to approve items 1A and B.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Decter Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Items 1A and B are approved, two appointments and reappointments. A, Sophia Nagda Noshe, appointment to the Asian Affairs Commission, replacing Tina Tran, and B, Joyce Arlene Roberts, appointment to the Human Rights Commission. Do we have any speakers?
We have one speaker, Mr. John Hoffeins, for 2A and B.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Peace, yes, peace. Thank you to our honorable city leaders, Mayor Monroe Nichols, Council Chair Phil Lakin, councilor, staff and team. Thank you, we appreciate you, and of course, we're thankful to the rest of the citizens of this great city of love, Tulsa, Oklahoma. It is a joy to be with you on this 18th day of June in the year of our loving Lord, Jesus Christ, 2025. Yes, appointments and reappointments, Sophia Nagda Noshe, appointment to the Asian Affairs Commission, and yes, B, Joyce Arlene Roberts, appointment to the Human Rights Commission. May we continue to be aware of and honor the rights of human babies still in their mother's womb, and we pray blessings on all the mothers as well. And may we continue to honor our volunteers and employees. Thank you, family.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffeins. Do we have any council discussion?
Move to approve items 2A and B.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Decter Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Okay, 2A and B are approved. Are any of the commissioners here tonight? Okay, we appreciate your service. Three public hearings, there are none, four mayor's items, mayor's report on community events, briefing on city activities, city efforts, and new business. Come on up, how are you?
I'm doing great. My voice, my voice is really bad, and so I'm very sorry about that. First thing is actually the most recent, we had a press conference on some new developments in the Graves investigation, that, you know, it's obviously been some, a number of you who were here before I was, were very instrumental in making sure that the city was committed to bring closure to those families, and I can tell you, progress is being made, and so I'm really excited about that. But tonight, really here to say thank you for the hard work over the last couple of months, as we've worked through the budget. I know it has not always gone incredibly smoothly, we have been learning as a team, but we worked really hard on it, and I appreciate the effort that we put in, being met with similar effort from the council, and so to each one of you, I say thank you to Sarah. Thank you, Sarah, for your help and your partnership over the last couple of months. Certainly to Kristi and Jared, who I'm sure are here somewhere, because I said budget, and they kind of just appear when I say that. Mike, Dana, everybody who's just really leaned into it. As you all know, what we presented to you a couple of months ago was the result of a lot of work with department heads, and not necessarily fully reflective of all the things that we wish we could do, but the things that we felt like we needed to do, understanding that we are in somewhat of a tough environment. The product that we have now with your partnership is one that I think gets most of those things done, while also making sure we're being incredibly fiscally responsible, in case we see some additional dips down the road, we can protect our employees, we can protect the city itself from any major disruptions, and I do have the nine of you to thank for that. So this is my first budget as mayor, and as best I can tell, nobody gotten into any fistfights. I don't know maybe what you may have said about me when I wasn't around, but all is forgiven. No, I was kidding. No, but it really has been just a great, a great experience, and I just really appreciate it, and I wanted to make sure I came down and tell you all how much, how much I appreciate your service, I appreciate your partnership throughout these last couple of months, and frankly, for the entirety of the few months I've been in office. So thank you so much.
Agreed, very well said, mayor. Thank you. So do we have any speakers on the mayor's items?
We have one speaker, Mr. John Hoffeins.
Thank you, just like to say thank you to the mayor, thank you to you all in the harmony and unity you're operating in to see this come to pass, so thank you.
Thank you. Item 4B will be read and voted on separately, obviously, because I'm going to read it now, and then we're going to vote on it separately. B, resolution relating to the occurring of indebtedness by the trustees of the Tulsa Authority for Economic Opportunity in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $8 million waiving competitive bidding and approving a purchase contract and other related documents. It does have the emergency clause, and I said, and as I said, waive competitive bidding. Do we have any speakers on the resolution?
We have no speakers for 4B.
Is there council discussion?
Move to approve the resolution on 4B.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Decter Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Item 4B is approved, is there a motion to waive competitive bidding?
Move to approve the waiver of competitive bidding.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Decter Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
What do we vote?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes. Okay, item five C is approved, seven C is approved. D, ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Tulsa for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, ordering the transfer of enterprise income to the general fund, appropriating unexpended balances for grant funds and capital projects for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, ordering and directing the computation and filing of levy requirements for the same year, reserving fund balance of nine point nine percent as an emergency operating contingency in the general fund, approving an emergency telephone fee of five percent, and ordering the filing of the city of Tulsa budget for this next fiscal year with the state auditor and inspector of the state of Oklahoma. And E, ordinance approving and adopting the capital improvements plan for the city of Tulsa for FY twenty-six through thirty as part of this annual budget. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, we have one speaker, Mr. John Hoffines for seven D.
Thank you, councilors. Yes, seven D speaks of ordering the filing of the city of Tulsa budget fiscal year twenty-two thousand five, twenty-two thousand six with the state auditor and inspector of the state of Oklahoma. The state of Oklahoma constitution speaks of invoking the guidance of almighty God. So, almighty God, we invoke your guidance in twenty-two thousand five and twenty-two thousand six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffines. Any council discussion?
Move to approve items seven D and seven E with modifications as reflected in the updated budget ordinance distributed in the one P M committee meeting today and the technical change memo as amended and redistributed at the four P M meeting today with the emergency clause on seven E. Second?
Please call the roll.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
No.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes. Okay, items seven D through E are approved with the emergency clause on seven E and the other modifications as Counselor Dr. Wright outlined in her motion. Mr. Mayor, do you want to say anything else about the budget? You're already good, golden. Okay, seven F, ordinance amending Tulsa revised ordinances to Title Thirty-five Infrastructure Development by amending Chapter Two, Section two oh one, two oh two, two oh six, Chapter Three, Section three hundred. G, ordinance ZCA thirty-six, amending the city of Tulsa zoning code Tulsa forty-two, Title forty-two, I should say, and a number of sections within that whole category. H is a rezoning ordinance from C S to R S three of four work or lots on the southwest corner of East Thirty-first Street South and South Winston Avenue. I, ordinance naming increment District A of the amended and restated Tulsa International Airport Economic Development Project Plan as increment District Number Twenty-three and establishing the date for accretion thereof and other items as listed in that item. J, ordinance closing a sanitary sewer easement requested by Ellen Dietrich on behalf of the property owners located at two six two two East Twenty-eighth Street South. K, ordinance closing a sanitary sewer easement at two six oh two East Twenty-eighth Street South. And L, ordinance amending Title Forty-four, Chapter One. Do we have any speakers on these items?
We have one speaker, Mr. John Hoffines for seven G.
Thank you, councilors. Seven G refers to farmers' markets. It's great to see fresh foods for our bodies being provided. Also, it is great to know, as we read God's inspired word, the Holy Bible, His Spirit and His words provide us with fresh nutritious food for our hearts and souls. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffines. Do we have any council discussion?
Move to approve items seven F through seven L with the emergency clause on seven F.
Second, please call the roll.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes. Okay, items seven F through L are approved with the emergency clause on seven F. M, ordinance making the application of ordinances protecting individual human rights more consistent across various provisions of Tulsa revised ordinances Title Five and the other sections as outlined therein. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, we have fifteen speakers.
Okay, so are they all in favor, all opposed?
All in favor.
Okay. So we, so we should have thirty minutes for a side, so that objection, I'll just give two minutes to every person, or we can just go with the first six speakers.
Wait, out of curiosity, because we do thirty minutes for a side when it's like two sides that have a large number of people.
Thirty, thirty minutes total.
So that would be sixty minutes of total discussion or comments if we were doing it that way. But since there's only one side?
Yeah, but if we had one, right, but if we, we have usually reserved it thirty minutes for one side, thirty minutes for another side, so it's thirty minutes for a side. And typically what we've done is we've said, you know, we can give every, you all can figure it out and take as much time as you want, or we can just allot it and do two minutes each.
Okay, that's, yeah, two minutes each.
Is that okay? Okay, Madam's timekeeper. Okay, so two minutes each, you'll see the red, the yellow light turn on whenever you have thirty seconds left, and then that red light, if you just pay attention to it, I know it's tough to do while you're speaking and things, but just please try to stay on time. And then Counselor Gilbert, when you have about twenty seconds or so, she may say you have twenty seconds, and it's kind of weird whenever it comes in, but just keep on plowing through it, but that's just to let you know that there is, that the time is limited. Okay, please call our first speaker.
Our first speaker is Kathleen Powell.
Hello, my name is Katie Powell. I'm a homeowner in the Oneeka Heights neighborhood in West Tulsa, District Two, but I serve all Tulsans in my professional capacity, particularly young ones. Mr. Archie, the time is now to pass this ordinance and guarantee liberty and justice for all. This ordinance represents the Oklahoma standard, and we look out for each other and take care of each other. Mr. Lakin, we listen to many Sundays to Hess teach us how to be the hands and the feet and uplift and protect the meek, and this is the time to do it. I urge you all to take action. I urge you to act justly, to love mercy, and walk humbly and pass this ordinance. We've been talking about this for fifty years. We were looking at some of the research that's been gone. We've been talking about this for fifty years, and it is time to take action. It is time, we look at cities across the nation that are not up to the Oklahoma standard, and we have a real opportunity here in Tulsa right now, today, in twenty-two thousand five, to not table this anymore, to not push it off anymore. It's time that we look out for all Tulsans and we put our money where our mouth is, and we got to put our mouth there first and vote yes, so that's really all I have. I can yield the rest of my time, but you know, I just really, as a proud Tolson, as a proud Oklahoman, I think this represents the Oklahoma standard, and it helps us move Tulsa forward and keep the young people who are leaving, you know, if you talk to young people in Oklahoma, they're trying to get out of here, right? And that is not the goal. We want more generations of Tulsans, more generations of proud Oklahomans to come in and say, man, do you remember in twenty-two thousand five when I was graduating high school and I really was debating on whether I was going to get out of this state or I was going to stay here, and my city council members voted to protect me and to protect all of the marginalized and veterans and everybody else? I see the veterans over there that this is on here. You know, this isn't just about LGBTQ issues. This is about veterans, this is about, you know, the meek and the widowed, and it's our job to take care of them.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Joshua Payton.
Hold on, just a second.
Yeah, it's all right.
It always helps when everybody stares at her.
There you go. All right, hello, my name is Josh Payton. I'm an attorney. I'm a resident of Tulsa County in Phil Ikens District. What's unique about me is that I have devoted the last five years of my life to serving the LGBTQ plus community. I have my own small law firm, but I co-founded with my wife the Oklahoma Equality Law Center, and what we do is we strive to work to provide equality for all. And I have represented literally hundreds of Oklahomans, hundreds of Tulsans, who meet the definition of the LGBTQ plus part of the community. I am a straight, white, cisgender male. I am just a normal guy, but I'm here to beg you to approve this. My clients, this is a life or death matter. I've had many clients commit suicide. I've heard some of you through the grapevine, fear of losing federal funding. What about Bostock? What about this? What I will say is, to delay is to deny. To wait is to withhold. And if we fail, then these people will be forgotten. And I'm saying this because I have taken a lot less money to serve these people. It is not easy work, but I can tell you with certainty that if you're afraid of losing federal funding for the city, they are afraid to have housing. If you're afraid of what this will do to the business community, they are afraid of whether or not they will be alive tomorrow. They are underemployed, they have reduced access to health care, they have trouble with housing. And I have fifteen seconds, I will tell you that I worked with the city of Bartlesville to pass a housing discrimination ordinance for the gender identity and sexual orientation. And there was a sixteen-year-old girl next to me that sat. Everyone is watching us all across the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Chris Moore.
Good evening. Hang on.
Yep.
Maybe one of those little boards.
I'm watching Karen, I'm assist.
Like the director's board.
Yeah. Good evening, council. My name is Chris Moore. I'm a resident of District Nine, and the church that I serve is in District Four. It's not often easy to recognize a moral moment. This is a moral moment for all of you. Sometimes it comes buried in lines in an agenda, though we expect something dramatic, and it isn't. But this is indeed a moral moment, and I come to you troubled by what feels like it should be an easy vote. This isn't a moral moment because you're voting on your opinion of the morality of any single identity that this ordinance would protect, but rather this is an even more basic moral question. Who counts? Do some people count more than others? If a known class of people studied and quantified by many reports as under duress in our society, in our city, who are vulnerable victims of discrimination, is it not incumbent upon the city to protect those citizens to the best of its ability? Feels like an easy answer. People deserve to be able to work, to be housed, and generally move through life without discrimination. That's the claim you've already made for other identities in the city code and even for the identities in question tonight in other parts of city code. So why the delay? If we allow ourselves to shrink from this moral movement in the face of imagined, even expected opposition, then we are making the wrong moral choice. It is not enough to simply frown at the hate that some offer and then do nothing when the question comes to us. If it is wrong to discriminate against people for no other reason than their identity, then it is wrong, period. I hope that you will find the courage to make this direct moral choice. Tulsa is a city for all Tulsans. May your vote reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Jeremy Otis.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Otis. I'm a resident of the city of Tulsa, District Four, and I'm also an attorney like Josh. I'm here representing Oklahoma for Equalities Allied Attorney Group. I'm here to express my overwhelming support for my councilperson's ordinance, Laura Bellis' ordinance. These protections must be implemented now, or the city risks abandoning its two-spirit LGBTQIA plus citizens to the hateful and deceitful whims of a federal government that would rather my community and your community be silenced, disappeared, or worse. We, as Tulsa's two-spirit LGBTQIA plus community, refuse to be controlled by fear. We, as attorneys practicing in this city, will continue in our steadfast commitment to fairness, justice, and freedom. Like the city's residents, our clients include members of both two-spirit LGBTQIA plus communities and veteran communities. Anti-discrimination is first and foremost a life or death issue for anyone listening to this speech. That comes with quite a large trigger warning because we're talking about suicide. Since I don't have much time, I'm going to tell you about my story. On May seventh, the Oklahoma legislator passed a concurrent resolution to ask the Supreme Court to overturn Obergefell. One week later, I was in Laureate because I had decided to end my life. And all I want you to know is that ordinances like this matter, especially to young people. I have statistics in here, you probably know them. Young LGBTQ people are far more likely to commit suicide than their straight cisgender counterparts. Veterans also deserve attention in this conversation because they too are far more likely to commit suicide. Just do, just do the right thing. And to everyone here who's two-spirit LGBTQIA plus, I, I love you. Keep fighting, keep living.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Brandy Ward.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brandy Ward. I'm a resident of District Seven, and I'm here to speak on, obviously, on the civil rights ordinance. What does this ordinance do? Well, having read the markup, it's basically just cleaning up language, trying to add some consistency across the various definitions that appear throughout the city ordinances. After fifty years of hodgepodge changes, what is, what do they do? Well, they basically align the city ordinances with existing federal and state law. This was all discussed ad nauseam twenty-one months ago when I was standing at the same podium. The only really noticeable change is the inclusion of gender identity and veteran status. Well, I stand here as a Gulf War veteran and a transgender woman to basically say that those rights are already spelled out in federal law. One of the dissenting speakers made a big deal last time of, well, all people means all. Why do we need to include all these people? Well, Jim Crow taught us differently. Apparently, all doesn't always mean all. Some of you may be worried about what your constituents might think and possibly even weaponize in the primaries, ooh, the transgenders. Well, again, already under federal law, most notably Bostock and its, its interpretation of Title Seven of Civil Rights Act, that's had wide sweeping implications so that already we've got these protections under federal law. They're just not being recognized at the local level. Why is that important? Well, it sends a message. I spoke here eight, twenty-one months ago, and I detailed in two separate incidences where I was denied health care based on my transgender status. That health care was unrelated to my transition, my gender-affirming care. And I'd like to amplify something that Mr. Payton just said, quoting Clarence Thomas, "Right delayed is a right denied." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Hannah Jackson.
Good evening.
Are we good? Good evening. I stand before you in full support of this ordinance change to add veteran status and align public accommodations, accommodation protections and housing protections. As a community, it is essential that we honor those who have served our country and create a city where people, regardless of identity or gender, can live and work with dignity, respect, and safety. As a queer woman with friends and family who are lesbian, bisexual, two-spirit, trans, and non-binary, and gay, it is important to me to stand here and share a little bit about why adding these protections are so important. In Tulsa, there are more than forty thousand two-S LGBTQ plus people. We work in finance, we work in tech, we work in government agencies, we work for local small businesses and for national brands. We own restaurants, we are Tulsa Remoters. We work for Fortune five hundred companies, and we sell books at your favorite bookstore. We serve you coffee, and we welcome you at your favorite museum. We are nurses, construction workers, and elected officials, and we are scared. Many of us are leaving. I personally know three families who have already left or are working to leave.
You have thirty seconds left.
We've lost an executive, a small business owner, a scientist, and an educator, all because they didn't feel safe here. And that's a loss not just for them, but for our city's talent, innovation, and economy. As Jenny Graham wrote in her editorial on Monday, "Spelling things out in government policies ensures that everyone has some, the same opportunities and rights. If it is not a problem, then this won't hurt anything. If it is a problem, then people will have a recourse." I'm asking you today to spell out the protections so we feel safe here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Krista Patrick.
Good evening. Hello.
You know how to run the timer.
I do, I do. I've come before you today as somebody who's literally sat in your seats not so long ago and dealt with this very issue personally. I need to tell you today what I couldn't tell you then because I sat beside you, I sat on the other side of the cabinet. You broke me that day. When some of you decided that I, as a person, didn't deserve the same protections and rights as everyone else that, that ruled this government, it broke me. That is part of the biggest reason why I didn't seek reelection, not because I didn't want to serve my people, but because serving beside, sitting beside people who thought that I was less than, that I deserved less than, broke me. I want you to think about that. We are all, we all have a gender identity, we all have a sexual orientation. This doesn't just protect gay people or veterans or Christians. It, it, it protects all of us. It aligns us to be equal. It doesn't put anyone above anyone else. It aligns us to be equal. It, it coordinates all of our language to be the same across the board. And if you're worried about federal funding, we're already there. It's already in our ordinances. So they can cut it if they decide to. There is no reason to not align all of our language to speak the same thing, to really make all of our citizens feel equal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nicole Montgomery.
Hello again, councilmembers. My name is Nicole Montgomery. I served in the U.S. Army from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and three. I'm here today not just as a veteran, but as someone who's been fighting for our rights long after the uniform came off. Tulsa claims to honor its veterans. We have flags and parades, we have plaques on the walls, we have speeches and ceremonies, but we don't have protections, not, not where they actually count. This city has built policies that protect nearly every class of citizen, except veterans. That needs to change, and that needs to change tonight. I spent the last decade standing alongside my brothers and sisters in American Legion and the VFW, fighting for veterans who are too often overlooked. I've seen firsthand how easy it is for us all to fall through the cracks, discrimination in housing, employment bias, and red tape that doesn't care. If someone stills learning to walk again or trying to hold down a job while battling trauma that never left. We serve, we sacrifice, and when we come home, we're expected to silently rebuild without help and without complaint. You may think, well, we have federal protection. Sure we do, but you know how slow it is? They don't protect us from landlords, workplace retaliation, and they don't help when a veteran gets passed over for a job because they're seen as too unstable, too unbroken, or way too much of a risk. Adding veterans as protected class at the city level doesn't just say we matter, it gives us a seat at the table when it counts. It means younger generation of veterans don't have to fight a second war just to have the same opportunities others take for granted. It sends clear message, Tulsa protects those who protected it. We are not asking for special treatment, we're asking for equal ground. This vote is tied four to four, four to four, one vote is left. This is to you, Mr. Archie. I need you to hear this. Real people who wore the uniform, who showed up when this country called in war and peace at home abroad, and when the uniform came off, they were left to fight different battles when they never trained for, being invisible in this city they call home because they didn't teach us to cope. I represent every veteran who's tired, who's too sick, or too broken to stand here themselves. I am asking you to do what's right, to lead, and to listen.
Your, your time's expired.
And to be the person who finally stood up and said veterans deserve to be protected too. Please see me. I'm a vet. I'm a vet. I'm almost fifty. Please help my kids and everybody else that wants to serve our country if they become a vet too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Grace Fallon.
Good evening. Thank you. I never thought that I'd be standing in this room again, addressing you all again. Greetings, Ms. Bush. I live in your district now, but two months ago, I lived in California. I had left. I left for, at the end of last year, after receiving multiple threats against my life because I could not take it anymore after five years of relative stability. The changes at the federal level have made this place near unbearable. Now, you all have done an excellent job stewarding technology growth here, you have done an excellent job stewarding business here, and so at the whim of economy, I took a job back here at a startup, and I am thrilled at the opportunity. And now I'm looking at houses, and I'm looking on Zillow, and I'm seeing, oh, that's right, this city has no protections for people like me. If the federal ones crumble, I don't know what will happen in certain neighborhoods to people who, who wear clothes that don't match the perceived gender that they walk down the street as, who wear nails and hair that don't match the perceived norms that society has created. And so I'm really hoping that we can take this first step, this bare minimum step toward aligning ourselves, toward checking off those tiny green boxes as I search for a home for a place to call home. Every week that I've been here, another friend, another transgender person has left this state, and you know where they're going? They're going to states where they have protections, they're going to cities that have called themselves sanctuary, because that is what we are seeking, is all, is sanctuary, is peace. Please vote tonight, and please vote affirmative. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Sam Robson.
Good evening.
Good evening, councilors. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I am legitimately humiliated that I have to be here. It was humiliating earlier today, listening to a hearing about my basic rights and hearing councilors who I thought I trusted, wondering whether now's the right moment, whenever this ordinance should have been passed in eighteen ninety-eight, the day that this city was established. I wish that I could come up here and... I wish that I could come up here and plead and just be friendly with you, but that is not the type of mood that I am in today. This is an issue of life or death for my people and many others, and this is a moral issue, as Chris Moore said. Councilor Lakin signs my checks, I'm an employee of the Tulsa Community Foundation, and to hear the CEO of that foundation doubt whether I should have protections from discrimination on the basis of my sexual orientation, that makes me absolutely furious. So not only as my councilors and my community members, but as my employer, I implore you to show that you care about your queer family members and your queer community members, because we will remember how you vote today. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Tyler Duncan.
So, I'm Tyler, I am a business owner in Laura Bellis' district, I live in Venice Hall-Harpers district, I love both of them very much, I love my city very much, and I love a lot of you very much as well. Some of you, I've had the pleasure of, you know, having barbecues with, or, you know, hosting in my business after a wild morning ride, that's kind of crazy. But my ask here in front of you today, this morning, this afternoon, is basically just a yes, like everybody else, you know, there are fifteen of us that just would love for this to get across the board finally, after, you know, it being tabled due to whatever reasons a year and a half ago, the unanimous yes that came through for housing specifically. The ask is that we just clean up the language and make this across the board. A couple of specific things that I'd like to point out. Has anyone in the crowd out here received any threats, texts, emails, walking down the street, for any of your status? Can I just see a hand?
Tyler.
Yeah, sorry.
You just have to address the council.
Sorry, so, has anyone on the council received threats? And it's a rhetorical question. Imagine living as this person that you are, thank you, that you are receiving threats for, and what I don't see tonight are people who are signing up to speak in opposition to this, but rather cowardly sending you text messages threatening you. You have people who have showed up from the community, from this very specific class of folks, asking for protections, and I ask that you would please vote yes not to table it, for all of our family members and your own as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Amaya Mason.
I'm twenty years old, my grandfather is a veteran. He fought and provided medical assistance to other people that he needed, and he found his lifelong dream in providing medical assistance to his community in Tulsa where I was born and raised, and now have spent, as of a couple, or about a week ago, twenty years in. And right now, in his community, he sees, as he's serving these people, that they are disproportionately affected by homelessness. They are disproportionately affected and cannot afford services that they need to live. This is not a question of whether or not they deserve it, they deserve the ability to pay for healthcare, they deserve the ability to have and find jobs that will support them, that do not care that they might have rough days because of the difficulties they've endured. And I also come here as a Tulsa citizen who has known so many different people in Tulsa, and that is why I love this city. I love seeing people of different backgrounds, people of different worldviews, and people in my life who I love who are women, who are women who dress masculine, who are men who dress feminine, and maybe they're people who have different orientations, and all of them contribute so much to this city that I love, and they deserve also to have healthcare, they deserve also to have housing, and they deserve to have the protections that they have in other places, but that should be clarified and expanded upon.
Thirty seconds.
And they deserve to be able to not just, this isn't diminishing anybody else's ability to express themselves, it's not diminishing anybody else's ability to live and prosper, it is simply giving them protections they need, and this should not be delayed any longer because right now is a time of fear where we need to speak up and protect the citizens that we have vowed to protect and the Tulsans that we now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Hayden Lee.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Hayden Lee, I'm a member of LGBTQ+ community, I have family members, my father served in the military for over a decade, my great-grandfather fought in World War II. I'm here standing for you today to vouch for them, and my family members, my friends, my neighbors, who are all members of LGBTQ+ community, and just offer them protections, give them an equal opportunity like everyone else, ability to thrive, ability to be themselves, and not need to worry about who or what is going to be prejudiced against them based on just who they are as a person. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Joshua Starks.
Let me know when. Good, okay. You know, the last time we spoke about this, I was up here, I spoke about, man, three years' fight is a hard one to do in two minutes. I spoke about my driver in Afghanistan who was trans, and when they came home, they were denied housing because of the way they looked in Oklahoma City. As a commander in the Oklahoma National Guard, I had nowhere to go. There was nothing I could do to protect them or try to get them in housing, not because of why they were denied it, because there were no protections for them, unfortunately. They served their country and came home and were told, no, they couldn't live in a house, right? That's the reality of the situation. But that's not what I'm here for. What I'm here for is to tell you that I've been trying to add veterans protections to the city of Tulsa municipality, because our protections are there federally, but they are delayed. They are delayed right now, currently, in a perfect world, thirty-one days at best, a hundred and eighty days at worst, and then it can be another hundred and eighty days after that for anything that we find discrimination against. Any veteran out there trying to find a job, looking for their promotion, looking for a place to stay, they're not going to wait thirty, sixty, ninety, they're going to find a way to get a house, they're going to find a way to feed themselves, and they're going to move on. Ninety percent of what we experience and what we see is ignorance, and I say ignorance because they don't understand the nuances of a verra and usera. I bring up verra because it was passed in nineteen seventy-four. Why? Why did we need protections for veterans? Veterans are amazing, we all love veterans, I know I love them all. However, after nineteen seventy, nobody loved them. When Kent State massacre occurred.
Josh, you have thirty seconds left.
No one cared, and we needed protections. We find ourselves in a similar situation in LA, and that could broaden out across the U.S. It's easier, and it's smarter, and it's faster to get protections passed now than to wait till after some YouTube video goes blasting across the internet and public opinion of veterans and service members change. That's the reality of the situation we're facing. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Our last speaker is Whitney Sapola.
Hello. All right, thank you. My name is Whitney Sapola, and I am proud to represent Oklahomans for Equality as Board President and the Chair of the city's 2S LGBTQ+ Committee. I have lived in Tulsa for thirty years, I have only ever lived here. I love Tulsa and have built my home and my life here because I believe in us as a community, and I believe Tulsa can be a city where everyone is protected equally and fully under the law. I urge you to vote yes on this. Delaying or denying this vote is quite frankly failing thousands of veterans and queer Tulsans in our community. This has been shaped by decades of advocacy, years of discussion and revision. This is, the first time I have record of it is nineteen seventy-six. My parents were children, nineteen ninety-four, that is the year I was born, twenty twenty-three, where there was real impact from that not passing then. If you still have concerns about it in its current form, you are legislators, you can come back to it, that is the legislative process. Please, I implore you, do not support us behind closed doors and deny us our rights and your official capacities as elected leaders. We are counting on you to represent all Tulsans, all people in our community. The city is watching, and we can't, we can't accept it's not the right time or it needs more work because we'll be waiting another fifty years. We are not willing to pass this fight on to the next generation of Tulsans, to our children and their children. We will continue this fight, we will continue showing up year after year after year if we have to, because we deserve to be seen, protected, and treated with dignity that all Tulsans deserve. This is an opportunity to make things right and move forward together, and I hope to do that work with you. Thank you, and please vote yes.
Thank you. All right, council discussion.
Move to approve seven M.
Second.
Is there any council discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
And I want to say I appreciate everybody who spoke today, and I hear you, and I understand that it has been a battle. As we discussed earlier today, my concerns are, as they were pointed out, that we still have some holes in this ordinance, and some definitions that need to be added, they're in certain areas and not in others, so it's really not a clean document yet, and I mean, I'm really torn here because I do want to support and be a welcoming city, but I also know as legislators, going back and amending and amending is really a difficult process. So I am just asking if we can table this, at least until we can clean it. I hear you, I understand, I'm not saying fifteen more years, people, I'm not going to be here in fifteen years. We need to make sure it's a clean ordinance, in my opinion. That's all I'm asking.
Is, so are you, are you making a motion to table it, are you just suggesting that we table it, what's?
I'm bringing it up for discussion, yes.
Counselor Dutton, and then Archie.
So I want to send out a heartfelt appreciation for all of you that showed up tonight to speak on behalf of sixty thousand people of our community, that is the size of Owasso. You all are contributing to our community in leaps and bounds, financially, small business-wise, emergency services, TPD, TFD. I'm so grateful to each and every one of you, and I want to say as well that forty-five years is too long, fifty years is too long, five years is too long. So I just want to thank you each for speaking from your hearts. You are our community, and I appreciate each and every one of you, and the language is clear. The ordinance is clear, it's not a dirty, messed up ordinance. So I just wanted to let you know, thank you.
Counselor Archie.
Number one, Wenetka Hites is in the House. Okay, so yeah, West Side is the best side, of course. I have a question for Counselor Bellis, or Counselor, well, anyone can answer, I don't want to put you on the spot. Can you describe to me again, there's been some concerns raised by some contractors, COCs in particular, but if there are contractors or folks that depend on doing work with our city, how does this change affect them? Can you maybe give some more detail to that?
Yeah, I'm happy to clarify, and this is something that from, right, this is a document that's been worked on quite some time, and I commend City Legal's excellent efforts at creating uniform, solid legal documents for us to pass. I, with the contractors provision specifically, as people may recall from twenty twenty-three, when we were looking at this before, that was a matter of great, you know, issue and contention and a lot of feedback around, and from that and some other feedback, right, this document is not the same as it was in twenty twenty-three. What, the only change happening in the contractor section is changing the word he to contractor, which falls in line with stuff we've done throughout the charter, but as far as the uniformity of adding protected identities, did not touch the contractor section, acknowledging that that was a big barrier, didn't want it to get in the way of doing other good work or letting the perfect be the enemy of the good, and that policy is an evolving and refining process, and I think this is from, you know, years of work and decades of work, like, I think one of the best things we can do today, not to say that there's not more work to do, but as far as for any, like, entity contracting with the city, from twenty twenty-three, I think one of the things I was hearing was, just because of an array of layers from having to print certain things or be responsive to X, Y, or Z, there was concerns about competitive bidding and city contracts, and so to keep this, you know, as something that is, you know, clean, orderly, and feasible, that was a compromise that's been made in this document. So there's, for those private, like, city contractors, this doesn't require anything new or different of them.
And I'll just add on, counselor, across our ordinance changes, we regularly update the language this way, there was a time where the city charter referred to mayor as he, to counselor as he, to firefighter as he, we know that councilors can be she. We, so instead of just using she or he on contractor, because we know that contractors are not just he's, that's why it's saying contractor in this language, but this is a pattern in practice that we've adopted whenever we bring legislation forward for updates, when it has that older language in it.
So this is, just to put a finer point on it, this document, with all respect to Counselor Patrick, is modified from that original.
Absolutely, amended from twenty twenty-three.
There's been compromise since then. And there was one other thing, so there's a concern about federal funding. What, what do you say about, if this ordinance passes, does this open our city up to the wrath of Trump, or, you know, political partisanship? What would you say about that?
I would say in twenty fifteen, this body, including several counselors sitting with us today, unanimously passed these protections for housing, and we did not experience a retreat of federal dollars. We've actually pulled down a lot of federal dollars since twenty fifteen for housing, for infrastructure, for all manner of things. And so, we know who was president in twenty sixteen, and if there was going to be retaliation for putting this kind of language in our ordinances, I think we would have seen it then. We don't have a crystal ball, we're being responsive to our community, they've been before us time and again, asking, pleading, begging, and I will say, in the seven years I've been here when we've taken up these kinds of issues, never have I seen only four. Today, we have no one here today speaking against, that doesn't mean there aren't people who aren't against it, we know that, some people have received text messages, emails, I have not received one message in opposition. That is different than every other time I have sat up here having to undertake one of these votes. And so, there's a shift, and I think you see that reflected in our communities that are showing up for each other in ways that are bringing us together, not apart, in a time, as I heard earlier today, the Oklahoma standard, when Oklahomans and Tulsans are in need, we come together even to overcome differences of understanding. We represent all kinds of people that I don't necessarily agree with or understand, but that doesn't mean that I don't want to protect them. And so, I'm encouraged today that we didn't have to divide the time for or against, we had to divide the time to accommodate everyone who wanted to speak for. That is a first in the history of the council since I've been in this process, and I certainly haven't been doing it for fifty years, but I see many faces in the audience who have. So I'm encouraged, today is a day of encouragement, and as we said earlier today, if it doesn't pass today, we'll bring it back, that is the process. But I also want to say, justice- But I also want to say, justice delayed is justice denied. If there are things in the future that come from the feds or the state, we are responsive. We've had to amend, we take votes on ordinances every week. We've had to amend ordinances to align to new state statute, to new federal guidelines. And we'll do that. That's our job. But today, this language is compliant. We've even codified language. It says, we're not trying to go against federal or state. I trust our city attorney has put a good bill in front of us, one that has been workshopped. And to your point, Counselor Archie, is already a compromise from what was presented in 2023 that caused people to give the feedback that now Counselor Bella says that, hey, contractors, we're just going to make the language match in terms of not he or she, because we do that for firefighter, police officer, counselor, mayor. We're not getting into their business. And we've added veteran status. In 2023, the veterans on the Human Rights Commission said, hey, what about us? And that language that we voted on in 2023 didn't have them in it. Today it does. And I'm very proud of us being responsive and listening and thank you for your service and for repeatedly coming before us and pouring your heart out. I know it's terribly difficult. And I also want to acknowledge that we have a colleague here who is also a veteran and I know that's hard to hear. We can hear difficult things. We can make hard decisions because it's the right thing to do. And it is always the right time to do the right thing. And so I would just encourage you to really listen to what we've discussed here today. This is a compromise and a reflection of the work that has been ongoing in the last two years specifically, but clearly for the last 50.
To further comment to your question, I related to the federal funding piece. One is what we already see is like, I'm somebody, by the way, and I know a lot of folks, I think up here and out there, maybe similar, news junkie, I'm always reading, like I check Wall Street Journal, Fox News, New York Times, Washington Post, The Atlantic, like every single day, multiple times a day. I have a problem. It's not healthy. And when you look at the headlines of the things that yield being under attack for loss of federal dollars, we're not, we're not a city nor a state that is the target of that kind of effort or scrutiny. I'm not saying we'll never be. And, you know, we absolutely, of course, have faced federal funding cuts tied to language that's indifferent, you know, this or that fund that's been kind of indiscriminate at the federal level with kind of like those Doge cuts based on some language. Like that's very real. That said, this isn't us then baking in these protections into grant applications rewrite. That would just be unstrategic, right? So there's like, you know, we have the discretion to be smart about that is one of the ways that I really think about what it looks like to access federal dollars. I also think, and you know, this is something I know that's been verbalized, which is, you know, our mayor just announced reparations on a very national stage. I think the approach he took to it was a more, you know, conservative one, granted, but at the same time, to me, if we're going to be a target for certain types of policy or ideology, I think that ship has sailed, like on, like that national stage. However, that said, again, in the context of a state that has all 77 counties, you know, red when it comes to our last election, I just don't believe that we're that kind of target. And I think, when I think about the moral imperative to do the right thing to protect people, now feels like the right moment. One of the other ways I'm thinking about this is for federal dollars that we do have or have been, you know, like are accruing with the new veterans hospital and some of those things going in and the recent headlines, I brought this up in committee earlier, that there may be protections being removed or that there's been an announcement that protections ensuring health care in those hospitals for veterans does not discriminate based on marriage status was one of the things that's recently been struck by language. And that would then say that that could be someone single, somebody in a same-sex relationship, all sorts of things. And I want to make sure that the federal dollars that are coming in for our veterans hospital go to all our veterans. And so there are some things happening at the federal level where we already have federal dollars secured and I want to make sure they get to all of the people who need and deserve them and this can help us shore that up as well. But, you know, I understand the concern. I know we're living in scary times and that there's a lot of like that chilling effect where we're sometimes in advance self-censoring about things out of fear. And that's just not the kind of policymaking I think we should do as a body. I hope we, you know, boldly stand up for people. And again, I, what we've been seeing trend-wise for who's being gone after when it comes to federal funds being cut or redacted, it's not places like this.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Counselor Dr. Wright. Another question, well, let me make a statement and a question. You know, I don't, I don't doubt that everyone on this stage is genuinely wants every resident to be, to feel welcomed and protected. So that's a good faith sort of step. If, this is maybe for Counselor Lakin, if there was a desire to table, how soon would this come back to this environment? How soon would we vote on it?
Anybody can, you can set a time certain. So if somebody moved to table, then you could say that it's going to come back for reconsideration or off the table, if you will, on this exact date. So you could look in advance and ensure yourself or ourselves that all nine of us would, would be available to weigh in on that vote.
But we have a motion and a second. So are you saying we can table?
Yes, because it takes precedence.
Well, then we should call the question if that's what we're going to do. There's a motion and a second. And if there's a discussion now about usurping the motion and second to table this?
Council discussion is allowed while a motion is on.
Oh, I know. I know Robert's rules, but I also know we can call the question and I'm going to call it.
You can.
If, if we're going to move towards tabling.
Well, don't call it yet.
Well, I think he's just trying to ask a question.
I hear the question. Do you, help me understand how delaying this a month or 90 days is going to change it? It's not, Counselor. You've delayed it before and then we had a split vote.
Who are you talking to when you say counsel?
I'm talking to you, Chairman.
Okay, I'm talking to Counselor Archie and you inserted yourself into our conversation.
Right, because if we're going to do this, then I'm going to call the question. Well, I want to give respect to Counselor Archie. This is his first time in this kind of discussion.
So you could do it indefinitely.
Okay.
You do it to a time certain. And so those are really your two options. And on the indefinite part, because we are part of, and a public body, then any counselor could put it back on the agenda.
Okay.
So if this, if this is to pass, then it just becomes law. If it's to fail, then it has to wait for 90 days before somebody else puts it back on, before any counselor puts it back on.
Okay.
How can we table indefinitely?
I'm just telling you what Robert's rules say.
I'm going to ask the city attorney. We usually do a date certain. Is there some workaround here?
What does that mean?
I'm asking the city attorney to table something we do not have to determine a date certain.
That's right. The date certain refers to continuing a meeting. So if we continue this meeting, we have to continue it to a date certain.
I'm deeply disturbed to hear that clearly there's been some discussion about not only tabling, which I heard here to, you know, maybe add some language at some point, which would be a date certain, I would hope, Counselor, but to actually say you can put it indefinitely is, is really troubling. So I hope Counselor Archie would not consider tabling at all because there's a motion and a second on the floor. But I know you needed to ask the question, but tabling indefinitely?
But can I?
No, we just were told it was in Robert's rules. It's not something we generally do.
But, but with the understanding, so, so I think in, in Robert's rules, Robert's rules are obviously used by public bodies fairly often. But as I was just saying, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, any counselor, because we are a public body, can put it back on the agenda.
That's why it's on today. This counselor has put it back on our agenda.
I know.
I think he's saying for tabling, it can go back.
If somebody were to say table indefinitely and it passes, then somebody could say three weeks from now or six weeks from now, I want it off of the table and back on the agenda. So, so it's a.
Is that anyone or only the prevailing side that can do that?
No, it doesn't have anything to do with.
So what would be the point of delaying or tabling indefinitely for three or six weeks?
Okay, so this, I can answer now or I can answer.
Well, clearly there's been a discussion had with some of us not included.
A discussion that took place in the committee meeting last week and this week, at least from my perspective. I said both times that I had been working on the budget and I asked.
Right.
Okay, well, that's, that would be a reason to table though. Because like I, I think I have said, and if I haven't said it, then I'll, I'll say it here, I've obviously saw this in 2023. Some people did not see it in 2023. We don't have a comparison, you know, here's 2023 and here's the differences between 2023 and 2025. We can obviously see what it is right now and what it could be tonight, which it very well could be.
Do you have the red line version?
Yes, do you, is this comparing 2023 to 2025?
It's showing what is not there anymore. And we've, we've had numerous updates of like, it doesn't affect contracting.
Have the red line that was passed out, that was in backup material. Is this red line the difference between what was presented in 2023 and 2025?
It is that plus the, the items that Counselor Bellis has enumerated where the changes have been made.
I know what it is and I know that we got it seven days ago. And I know that there are people who have been contacting us, who, who are asking us questions about it that I, I certainly can't answer in the amount of time that I've had. So as I've asked for in committee, is there a reason why we're doing it right now? What is, what is the rush? What could, other people have asked this? What could the unintended consequences be? And then from the federal government perspective, I, I don't know what funding can or can't.
I understand. I'm going to call the question because we heard from 15 people tonight, we've heard year after year, why now and not later? So I'm going to call the question and I expect that this vote will split.
Now, whenever she calls the question, we have to take a vote on whether or not we want to close discussions.
The motion on the floor is to approve as submitted seven M.
You have to vote first on the, closing the discussion.
Well, we can continue in discussion, but if we have a motion in a second, why don't we just run the vote?
Because there is council discussion that's allowed after the motion has been made and seconded. That's the way that Robert's rules work.
I think that Counselor Dutton wanted to say a word as well, right?
Yeah, I think, I think there are, Counselor Dutton first and then Counselor Bingle are the two that I've seen. So you do not want to call the question?
I'm not trying to limit discussion. I am expressing my frustration that clearly discussions have been had about tabling indefinitely and that is extremely frustrating.
Well, I'll say this, there has been no discussions with me about tabling indefinitely. So me asking about tabling in the Robert's Rules of Orders, just kidding, I'm, you know, wrapping my mind around this. Some on this, on the council have been wrestling with this for years and years and years previous. And then, you know, some of us coming in, I saw this just a few weeks ago and I'm trying to understand all the options that are on the table. So just a genuine, just old genuine questions for sure.
Yeah, and, and I'll just say one more time the adverb, somebody could correct me if I'm wrong on that. But the indefinitely is a scary word, but given that we're a public body, it really, it really could come up next week if we wanted it to. I know, I'm not, I know, I'm not, I'm just trying to structurally say when it could come up. Indefinitely doesn't mean forever from now.
Right, and in September 2023, it could come up today. And I will respectfully say for those of you who are new to this process, if you've paid attention to municipal governance and the things that we take up, it's not new. I know you knock doors and people talk to you about this either for or against. I know mailers went out and I know that the mailers that went out against you were scary about drag queens and, you know, these things happened and you all prevailed because the people in your district did not want the people that were sending those mailers out using marginalized community to scare voters. You all are sitting here because you prevailed over a more extreme option. So I want you to have courage, listen to the people we represent. You know these people, they're your neighbors. You've probably knocked their door and asked for their vote or asked for a contribution to your campaign. Or they came to you to get a business, you know, going in your district. They want a rezoning. These are our friends. These are people that we know. We have a colleague sitting here saying why this is so important. And so to get into this minutia, we don't know if the language is right. We know the language is right. Our city attorney does not put things in front of us that are not right. So it's not about, is it legally sound? I understand if there's still ideological and philosophical debate, but at this point, you don't have to agree with everything to understand what's right and wrong. You don't have to understand certain people that you may not be personally acquainted with in the walk of life that they lead every day, but they've just come before us and poured their guts out explaining to you why this is so important. So I'm just saying, we're getting a little caught up in like, do we continue it to three weeks, three months, another three years, another 50 years? And, and quite frankly, working groups could have been established between 2023 and now and they weren't. We have one colleague who went and did the work. I respect that. If there's other people who after we pass this today go, there's more work to be done, there's language to be added or changed, then put a working group together and go with the city attorney and do a TRO. We do it all the time. We're doing it, we just passed tonight Title 24 so that mailboxes could be regulated. There was not this level of discussion, well, I didn't work on it for 10 months, so I don't know what the language is. They trusted those of us who have been doing the work to bring it forward and, and trust that we did the work with the city attorney and that we know what we're talking about. I trust Counselor Bella, she was the chair of the Human Rights Commission long before she was ever a counselor. She's been with this group, speaking at that podium, year after year after year, and now she's in this seat, doing the legislative work. And the timing is not three weeks from now. She's having a baby next week. So, well, it could be tonight at the rate we're going. I'm just, I understand, Counselor Archie, you want to know all your options and that is totally fair, but not everyone up here is brand new to this. And I would hazard a guess, in your campaign, it probably came up at least one time because we know that Counselor Q also had to be faced with these questions and that the things that she has voted for with many, many times for your district through tiers, she did the right thing. The last time she didn't vote for it, and I think it was because of the contractor language and some of these other things, and I don't know if you spoke with her about it, but I'm just telling you that in all those years that she represented District Two, she voted to protect people and I encourage you to do the same.
Counselor Dutton, if we can, usually it's not allowed to do the clapping and snapping. If we can, let us, I know, I know it's spirited, but let us just have our conversations to the greatest extent possible.
So I, yeah, I would like to thank Counselor Dr. Wright for all of your comments as well as your work, Counselor Bellis. We've known that this was going to be on the agenda for more than two weeks or at least two weeks. We had plenty of time as a council to do our due diligence. We had plenty of time to have conversations about what should be changed in the ordinance, what isn't clean about it. We've had plenty of time to have those discussions and I have yet to hear defined answers as to how this ordinance is not clean or what information needs to be deeper dived into and why, and why we have to keep prolonging this, except to say, we need a deeper understanding. There's been no conversation from those wanting that deeper, that deeper understanding as to what it is that they would like to understand more deeply. And I think having you all out here telling us is that deeper understanding. That is the conversation. And human rights are not yes and no options. Human rights are purely human rights. There is no no, I don't want to vote because I don't understand this. You vote yes and you're for human rights or you vote no? And I think that we can call the vote.
Counselor Bingle and then. Uh, Counselor Bingle, and then Bellis.
Thank you. I would remind my colleagues to be careful about their accusations in public. Um, and remember some of their own actions, uh, when we talk about uncomfortable conversations where colleagues have gotten up from the table and left the room in protest uh, to not even sit and participate in the discussion. So I'd be careful about accusing anybody of anything. Veterans were in the last iteration of this. They were an afterthought. Um, the problem for me, as I said previously, is this is continuously a moving target. I'm not all in my feelings about this, but I don't feel like this was genuine work in that there was a working group to get this to the point where there could be agreement. Um, to me, it's kind of like the pre-hospital working group that Counselor Dr. Wright asked me to serve on. We're working together nonpartisanshipally. I don't feel like this was done either in this iteration or the previous iteration. Um, and I would also re- remind my colleagues that they voted to suppress public speech uh, just a couple of months ago by removing prayer. Um, so access to government um, was supported uh, by most of my colleagues here, so. I wouldn't start making accusations or impeaching people's characters because they don't align with you specifically, or they don't look at things from the same lens that you do. I think each of you needs to be respectful of one another um, and not be accusatory. To me, I feel like if there was a working group that was put together to look at the language so that any oppositions or any discussion, the discussions that we have had have been, I think, very frank, very open, and pretty respectful for the most part. Um, but I feel like if this is something that we really need to do, then we should have done that as a working group and made that proposal today. But I don't feel like that's what happened here.
I'm glad I signed up to speak next. Slash, you're lucky that we have a fun rapport, because those are some, you still fired some shots, but I'm gonna leave it. I'm not, but really, anyway. I, um, as a quick, like, I have a little list going. I, I will say, responding to that process question, right, there's a lot of ways that policies come to our table and a lot of avenues for crafting policy. Um, right, working groups are one option, where people, like, we work in four or less, and that way you workshop something together, right? You can bring someone else in, you only need five votes, you get someone to the table. Um, sometimes policies come to us from the mayor's office, or code enforcement or whatever, gets to our table that way. Related to this one, this comes out of Title V Commissions. This comes out of the Human Rights Commission, this, um, and a lot of longitudinal work that actually happened after I was there. I wasn't as productive as the current Human Rights Com- Commission when I was chairing it. I led it through a really sloppy restructure, and now you all get to deal with that. Um, but, so to me, like, the working group itself was like, these volunteer citizens who have been appointed by an array of mayors over time. I think there's people on the Human Rights Commission who are, yeah, there's still people, I'm thinking of like Dr. Walker, who are appointed by um, Dewey Bartlett. And there's people from GT Bynum being mayor, and we have some newer appointees. So to me, I'm like, I have viewed what I brought to the table as holistic work that was done by volunteers, like, citizens of Tulsa, pulling something together, then I just got to usher and bring it to you all. Um, as someone who definitely does deeply care about this work. So to, I under- I understand what you're saying related to something coming more internally from the council. I just think to me, I view this as, hey, this arrived here through a different policy pathway, but one with just as much intentionality and research and vetting, and, you know, an intensive process. And, you know, I am so, like, you know, I voiced this earlier, I'm, you're right, like, the um, veterans piece in 2023 was an afterthought, which wasn't acceptable, and so I'm so glad I've gotten to spend all this time working with, I'm looking at Josh Starks over here, to make sure we did it right and holistically this time. Um, so just want to voice that while it didn't go through a certain type of internal council process, it came to us through a different channel that included just as much intentionality and purpose and thoughtfulness. It just happens to be one that, you know, but this got presented to us in a full committee setting because it came from that Title V setting. Um, I do want to, you know, thank um, Counselor Archie for his thoughtful questions, including, I appreciate, and this has been surfaced, that, you know, the enforcement part, or people having access to doing human rights complaints, isn't adjusted here. Like, you've surfaced that repeatedly through this, you know, through these discussions, and I acknowledge that that's like, right, this isn't the moon of a policy, it's not delivering all the things people need. So regardless of what happens here today, there's more work to be done. If we pass this, then we just have to get to work making sure human rights complaints are more accessible. That's been a longitudinal effort, too. Um, took six years to get the complaint forms on the city website at one point, so hopefully we can do better and faster with that. Um, but I, I just want to acknowledge that this goes back to that iterative nature. There's just more to do, but this is in itself with what it's aligning and what it's accomplishing. Um, you know, it's, I wish, I wish it was doing more for people, but I think it's a good starting place where at least we're, you know, cleaning up some of our, you know, our own internal house and processes, and just being statutorily um, slash, you know, policy-wise consistent. Um, I know that, yeah, I've heard suggested that people may have certain, like, edits, that I haven't heard a specific one, or that there may be language we could use that would offer something even a stronger protection, which, you know, happy to then go and look at that and workshop that for however long it takes. Um, but I go back to not wanting the perfect to be the enemy of the good. I've been asked about the timing a lot. Um, I swear up and down to my colleagues, because I think the unsaid thing is they're like, she's about to have a baby, so she's just trying to like, push this through too, or something like that, you know, and like, um, that's not what this timing is about for me. There's been lengthy discussions about why looking at this time of year um, related to staying, you know, and I've, my colleagues are like, if you say this one more time, I'm gonna like, please don't punch me. But like, it's making sure we're far away from the legislative session and not interrupting other types of policy work or making at other um, you know, levels of government. It's also about, you know, and that's on both sides of like, when they're actually in session, or when interim studies are kicking off. Um, it's also about, you know, intentionally knowing that, well, to me, I'm like, God, this is like, this small simple, like, just kind of language-related thing that barely does as much as I would ever hope it could. Um, that this can, is still, as we see, like, you know, a controversial topic. I wish it wasn't. I want to live in a world where it's not. Um, but part of that is also respectfully to my colleagues. You know, this is a year away from, we get reelected every other year, and I don't want to put people in crosshairs that I know they experience over these topics. And so I was trying to also stay away from, you know, as far away as I could from the legislative session paired with election cycles to be transparent. So to me, this was like, an attempt at really courteous timing. Um, and so that's more of the strategy there. Um, and also that I really was just like, man, since the only new language that's going into this at all is veteran status, and that's something that has transparently, right, broader appeal to people over um, if, like, things related to LGBTQ community, unfortunately. I was like, since that's the only new language and everything else is already in this, I naively was like, this shouldn't be such a tough one. Um, just being transparent that I kind of thought maybe this will be this no-brainer because it's all language that already exists in our city policies, and that the only new words were veteran status. Um, but I, and I, I understand and know, and I'm not so naive about the world we live in, that that's not what people are focused on. Um, and I just hope that we can afford people these protections sooner rather than later. I understand that we could argue federally that, okay, this court case, if extended in this way, does provide X amount of protection, but I just think it never hurts to be more clear, and that the best thing we can do is to be consistent in our language. Um, and so I think that's just setting a good groundwork for us to then go, move on to strengthen what it looks like to make sure people can actually report discrimination they experience. And of course, there's that ruling from two weeks ago with the Supreme Court in that Ohio case verifying that no one from a majority group or a minority group has any higher burden of proof to prove discrimination. Anyone can experience that, so. Um, I just hope we can move forward from this and not belabor it, because I know how dehumanizing it is to come have to justify why you need and deserve protections again and again and again, and I'm sorry that people have to do that.
Thank you, Counselor Bellis. I'll, I'll speak, and then I know Counselor Archie and Gilbert want to speak as well. Um, Krista, um, y- you and I are good friends, and, and um, I know we've had disagreements on elements of not just the, the policy that you authored, um, but other things as well, but we've continued to be good friends, and you know that I've never thought of you as a lesser person. I'm, I'm sorry if you believe that I thought that based upon what I asked or, or what I said. Uh, but you've, you've never been anything but just a good friend and a good person to me. Um, so I wanted to state that publicly and let you know it again. And I'll always feel that way about you and your family and your dad, and um, I'm grateful for your service as well. Um, I, everybody on the council knows this about me. Jack Blair uh, and Sarah, who helped me think through these things, know this about me. But I truly do try to dig into the content of these ordinances, and it really doesn't matter what the ordinance is. Um, and I've really tried to dig in. Um, I, I spent a lot of time very late at night going through the relevant cases and reminding myself, trying to remind myself of the different elements of the cases. Um, I have not been able to complete all of that work. And so when I see, you know, portions that relate to how services could be denied or applied or approved, um, if you will, for um, certain places of accommodation, it causes me to want to go out and ask those places of public accommodation that may have religious preferences or religious exemptions, you know, how is this, how is this going to affect the, the business that you're trying to provide within our city? I don't know the answers to that because I, I haven't asked the questions because I haven't been here over the last seven days to ask the questions. Um, so that's one element. On the, on the federal guideline, I mean, the federal grant related stuff, you know, 2015 was a different year. It's obviously five years before the Bostock case. So I do think that we are providing some protections before uh, the courts provided those protections. And those protections now are flowing through some other elements of um, these ordinances as we, as we have heard and already discussed. But I don't, I don't know, the, the political environment right now is very, very different than what it was in 2015, regardless of who's president or who became president. Um, this, this particular time is very different than it was in 2015, in my opinion. And um, yeah, there are other elements, so religion is not defined, which we talked about during committee. Uh, religion's not NT Gov, so which I think I mentioned either during committee or right after committee, so there's, there's some things that I would like to include, and I think um, if we had more time, we could.
We can always go back and do that.
I'm speaking for a second. Um, so that's why I continue, and, and then we have three new counselors and three and a half new counselors. Um, who, who haven't been part of the discussion beyond what we've had during two committee meetings. So I continue to just think about, I, I know you brought this, but how do we all, and I know you and I have a disagreement on this, how do we all get over the line at the same time together?
Let's, let's call the question.
Wait, you, you want, because I'm speaking now, or?
Well, I'm saying, that's how we get over the line. We call the question and vote. If it fails today, I'm looking forward to a working group bringing an amendment forward, so we can take it up again.
When you're not speak, when you're speaking, it's okay for nobody to call the question, but when you're not speaking, it's not okay for people to call the question. I still have other people that want to speak.
I understand, but we have a motion and a second on the floor.
And council discussion is part of council discussions. Okay, well, you, you seem not to because, well, because you keep asking when we're going to move forward with a motion. Council discussion is an important element. Okay? Yeah. Thank you for interrupting me. Counselor Archie.
Okay, um, well, so, thank you, uh, Chairman. Uh, so I, yes, I agree, I do believe details do matter. I think um, Cox Communications reached out and they were going through the list, and they said, well, there, there seems to be some provisions that we're under, that AT&amp;T is not under, because they're telecommunications. There are those details. So I, I, you know, there, there are, uh, you know, policy work is about uh, not just about the, the what, because we do want every, every person, regardless of who they are, to be protected, but the policies sort of uh, line out the how, how is that done? Um, so I think Counselor, to Counselor Bush's point, I, I think genuinely, I believe that you want to address.
I want to move to end this discussion and call the question.
Am I, I'm frustra- am I frustrating you, or?
I would like to end, I'm making a motion to end debate. I need a second on the motion.
Second.
Only because we already discussed the Cox thing.
Well, so my co-
Okay, you, you can't continue because the motion, the motion is on the floor. Do we need two-thirds majority on this, do you know? Okay, so the motion to end debate has been made and seconded, so if you vote yes, we don't talk anymore. If you vote no, we can continue our conversation. And then we go back to that original motion that was put on the floor by Counselor Bellis, I think, and then seconded by Dr. Wright or vice versa.
The vote yes is to table it?
No, 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 the vote, the vote, yes, if you vote yes, we just end council debate. If you vote no, then we just continue to talk.
If we end debate, we can call the question and run the vote.
Let's do it.
No, this is calling the question, actually. So please call the roll.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
No.
Counselor Bush?
No.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
No, because I have a question for you, Counselor Bush.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
No.
Counselor Bingle?
No.
Okay, that motion fails. We'll continue in debate.
Thank you. Well, so what I would say is this, we want, I want to move together as a um, as a council. I recognize that there's a lot of frustration here. But I think one of the ways that, that we, that we do that is by making folks feel heard. And I'm entering into this discussion genuinely. And so I, I um, I understand that we all have strong feelings about this. I'm prayerfully considering, you know, what is the best thing to do? And so Counselor Bush, I think that your concerns are genuine. If there was to be a tabling, um, how much time do you think you, you would need?
I would like at least a couple more months, and in all due respect, hang on, hang on. Why I said that is because you're going on maternity leave, and I'd like for you to be invi- hold on, I'm still talking. Okay, you're back in a month. Great, then we put a working to go, get together to clean up the language. That's all I'm asking. There may be some friendly, friendly amendments that we're not considering because we had all these other issues we had to deal with, the budget. I am not saying that we do it indefinitely. I'd like to get it done this year. Sooner the, sooner than better, the sooner is better than later. But it is.
For those, for those who are making comments, you're disrupting the council, and I don't, I don't want to have to ask anybody to leave. I just want this to be civil. Um, we, we listen to you, and this is, this is a difficult conversation. Now, we're just trying to work through it, so thank you all very much. Sorry, Counselor Bush.
So it, so it would be, so today's the 18th. Uh, Counselor um, Lakin or Counselor Bellis, when is the soonest that it could be brought back up if it was, if it was tabled?
If I got on the other side of a perinatal, like, phase, um, let's see, six weeks postpartum. I'd be looking at mid to late August, so maybe we look at late August, early September, if that's the timeframe we're discussing. I do have, if it's okay, if, were you finished?
Can we?
I have one other question within that, though.
Oh, sure, sure, but let's, I mean, let's just answer his question to the best extent possible, so.
There's like August 28?
27?
Oh, yeah, that's us.
Okay, so if, if there was the motion to table and not to table indefinitely
Right.
to a date certain, then according to Counselor Bellis and her s- her hopeful availability.
Yeah, um.
But like I said.
My only authentic inquiry within that, and this is like, I'm really asking of my colleagues, um, because like, I, I do believe some people are being extremely, like, genuine in their inquiries, or that they would need time to look at X, Y, and Z. I think what I struggle with is, I know some of my colleagues were offered by other colleagues, like, hey, do you want to talk? I can explain more about this, and they didn't take them up on it. Um, or were provided copies long in advance, or even had the red line copy at certain dates, and then like, transparently acted like they'd never seen it before, or, you know, I, um, I think, I'm not even naming specific names, this is just an experience across several of my colleagues. Um, or also, like, you know, could, shifting goalposts, like, we could keep asking and be like- Or also like, you know, could shifting goalposts, like we could keep asking and belaboring questions and questions and questions. And especially with court rulings and things like that, there's going, there's, you know, you could find ad infinitum things to ask about and have gray areas about and delay and delay and delay until it never happens. And that it really is an authentic concern of mine. I understand that people were working on the budget, that people traveled, that, you know, you know, we all were working on the budget. Like, I understand all of that and I want to believe that we would, and I do believe from some of my colleagues that we would really be doing that work in good faith. But I, at the same time, from what happened with the last round of this, and then as we've gone through the process this time where I've got, was getting calls from colleagues pressing me on things that turn out to not be even in the language because it turned out they hadn't read it. I just, it's hard, like, I want to delay, but then it's hard to do that in good faith without thinking that people aren't actually just trying to delay ad infinitum potentially and that then we'll just have more questions and more shifting goalposts because it's easier to do that than it is to actually vote on the thing. I'm just naming out loud my conflict here because I want to, like, I have so much trust and faith in my colleagues for so many different topics. But I know that this is one that is like, we'd rather avoid as long as we can in perpetuity, it feels like. And my other fear is that what we'll end up doing, and like, I would want to do this too, because I don't want like veterans to have to keep waiting and waiting, is that we'll end up in a spot, which I know this has been proposed, which is splitting out where, you know, veteran work and aligning there, and then work for, like, related to sexual orientation and gender identity and tackling these separately. And we'll get one across the finish line and then keep telling the other to keep waiting and waiting and waiting at a time in which, you know, both communities are especially under attack and scrutiny. And so I would just be asking of my colleagues that if we are tabling and delaying to a certain point, that there is real authenticity and that we're not just going to be infinitely editing and poking holes and coming up with various reasons. Because even through the past two to three or four weeks, depending on which colleague I'm thinking of, I, you know, I'm not going to pretend that I haven't lost some like trust in the process because I don't know that everyone authentically really engaged on this. And that's hard. So.
Counselor Bush, you want to respond? Counselor Archie?
Yeah. Well, you want to go first?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to table, put together the working group to a date certain of August 28-ish or whatever. I want to be able, I would like, because Counselor, I do respect you and the work you've done on this. I just think we have other questions. So I want to make sure you're involved in the working group so that we can make this the best it can be. That's all I'm asking. Not indefinitely, I want a hard stop. That's my motion.
Okay, so your, your motion is to go to August 27th is our next city council-
Okay.
Is a city council meeting on that Wednesday.
Okay.
So is it also at 5:00 PM in this room?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion? This doesn't, this doesn't stop.
Oh, it doesn't in discussion?
No.
Well, can, then I can comment after this?
If it receives a second. I'll second it.
Okay, yes. Okay, so, so what was I going to say? So to Counselor Bellis's point, yes. I, I'm not interested in delaying for delaying's sake. And if, and if some, one of our colleagues, I'm, I'm not sure who you were referring to, but if there was a colleague here that, or multiple colleagues who have broken that trust and they come back, you know, on the 17th, on the 27th, talking about, oh, we need more time or dilly-dallying, they're going to have a problem with me. And so that's, you know, I, I respect you, Counselor Bush, enough to say, I believe that genuinely, you're saying you want more time because you want to dig into it, the contracting work. I think there's an opportunity for us to do some education with our constituents about what this is and what, what this isn't. And so, yeah, I, I think, you know, that, that trust has been broken and I acknowledge that. I think I trust what, what you're saying, though.
And I agree with you on the education component of that. And we do need to do that. And we need to work hard and diligently.
Yeah.
Now that we have the budget behind us, we got zoning issues, and let's, let's dig in and work on this and get it done and get it done right.
We had an education with our speakers tonight.
We're just choosing who we want to listen to and how we want to be educated.
Okay, so I, I was just having a side discussion with Counselor Bellis. I'm sorry that I didn't hear what she said. But she was asking just about committee discussion and then council discussion.
Yeah. I'm acknowledging that, because here's the two options, like, just mentioning to the audience and my council colleagues.
Sure.
When we talk about timing and delay, part of me, like, I'm just naming what I'm weighing out, we can, we can vote on this tonight and then we'd have to wait 180 days to bring it back. Which, you know, I'm happy to bring this back every 180 days in perpetuity, as close to elections as we can all get. We can do that. That said, obviously, with this tabling option, we could be back here sooner. So obviously, I believe hearing people not want to have a delay, if that's like the best option to make it so we don't have to wait 180 days, then I think that would probably be better. I will name, though, that I know some of the edits that I kind of had heard suggested included things like, you know, being like, well, sex includes everything. So striking, like, language or identities, like, zero interest in participating in that. Potentially, we could be back here with almost an identical policy. I would like, will try to extend, like, trust in the good faith of others that we're authentically engaging in this. But I could in good conscience, like, past this tabling motion, delay this, past that point. And again, if it passes or fails at that point, then we can just keep doing this exercise. You know, as Harvey Milk said, hope will never be silent. And I know there's a lot of people out there who won't. But yeah, I could be supportive of if we, I think just to make sure there's actually, like, time for people to process and do due diligence, even though I want to believe that that could have already happened, that if we do committee the 27th and then on for a 5 o'clock, like the following, just wanting to make sure that-
So a week apart.
Well, I, I think the next meeting would be the 10th, correct? Because we don't have one on Labor Day.
Oh, we don't have one on the 3rd. Okay.
Yeah, so, so we could do, that, that's fine. I mean, if you, if you want to do that. So it'd be 27th for committee or-
Okay.
We could do, where, where does, if we table it, it doesn't need a second reading.
I just might not be able to engage prior to that much, which is the, yeah.
Hey, yeah, hang on, hang on just a second. So what, what happens if, if we table it? We don't need to, well, you tell us.
Well, with that much of a gap, I would recommend-
Doing a first reading again?
Doing a first reading as well, just for open meetings that notices.
First reading is, it's, it's immaterial. I mean, they just, we, we did three items on first reading tonight. Nobody even blinked.
And you, you could move to waive rules and pass on first reading if, if that's the preference.
Okay, so, so it'd be, it'd be August 27th for the committee meeting, September the 10th for the council meeting, August 27th would also be the first reading again, and then the 10th would be the second reading.
Yeah, and I would request that-
And we could put it on both dates for a committee.
The problem with adding emergency clauses, you need six, Counselor.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know what that, how that's directed at me. I don't know.
Somebody was mentioning, let's add the emergency clause.
Oh, Karen just mentioned that.
Okay, so-
And then my only other thing that I would ask is that what we're actually working on is still this holistic document. And I would, like, implore of the veteran community, who I know is also, like, you know, it's like, I know a lot of these things have been tied together and it makes you all wait longer too. And there's, I know that possibility of if we only did veteran, this could, yeah. I, well, I know that's intersectional and I know, but I'm just, I'm just naming that. Thank you for being along in solidarity with other groups. And like, I, like, have the full intention of making sure what we bring is still a holistic document.
So have Counselor Gilbert and then Dr. Wright.
I want to thank everybody for coming here tonight and sharing your story with us. I know that it's very difficult to, to get up in front of people that you've never met before and, and to be so honest. And so you all are very brave and I appreciate everything that you, you said tonight. Counselor Bellis, I appreciate you being flexible if we do postpone this until August 27th. I will, I will give you my 100% energy to work on this and have you involved in it the whole way. We will be calling you because we want to see the baby too on FaceTime. So you won't get out of it. But just making sure that, that we all have the opportunity to, to look at it more thoroughly, to make sure that if there, to make, as what Counselor Bush referenced, making sure that we include all the language. I get it. I get it. We do ordinances all the time, all the time. I mean, my panhandling ordinance, look at it, it's gone. So, but there's also ordinances that we have in place that we, we do keep amending every day, every day. But the thing that I think is imperative in this is that we send the strongest message to everybody that this is, that all of us are 100% behind this. And if that's what gives everyone, that others, the opportunity to do a little bit more research, because we have had the budget on us, working with a new mayor, then give us that opportunity. Give us that opportunity.
Thank you. Counselor Dr. Wright?
First of all, I just want to say that ordinances don't only come to us through working groups, although I appreciate the working group process. It's one that I use a lot to build consensus. What I'm hearing here is we're now asking our colleague who's been doing the work the most to work during maternity leave so that, I guess, another working group can be put together. I'm not even clear who's actually going to be on that working group. I'm hearing maybe Counselor Archie, Counselor Bush, Counselor Bellis, and Counselor Gilbert. I don't know. We can only have four. I will remind everyone that when there's five, it's a quorum. And so that's why we have these difficult discussions, so that you can all hear the discussion. If people are having discussions amongst five counselors outside of the public, then that would be an ethics violation. I also want to remind my colleagues that you can make amendments at any time. You can also amend on your motion. We do that as well. So I am a little echoing and amplifying what I heard Counselor Bellis say, that trust has been broken. The process, first reading on committee, first reading, second reading is a process we do all the time. This is not extraordinary. It's an extraordinarily clearly difficult decision for some people. I agree that human rights are for everyone and so we don't pick humans apart. I'd love if we lived in a time and place where we just say human, we all know who's protected. The reason we use specificity is because the classes that we are focusing energy on repeatedly are not treated equal. It's an aspiration. And then reality sets in and we have to add all of those long list of folks. I always ask my question, who's not on the list? And I would like to also say that the LGBTQ definitely, community definitely intersects with our veterans community. So I thank my constituent for coming today and for your service and for your repeated speaking and sharing and amplifying all the people who don't get to be in this room to do that. So thank you for being here and doing that. I heard Counselor Bellis ask our veterans, advocates to not divide and conquer. I'm not worried about those folks doing that. I'm worried about these folks up here doing that. So I want to hear a commitment from the folks up here who are asking to delay, that you're also not going to divide and conquer and separate our veterans and their protections from our 2S LGBTQIA folks.
Well, yeah, I've, I've already said, if we get here on the 27th, and I'm curious if there is not a way to, like, have the vote on the 27th, but, you know-
There is. We have first reading on the 20th, but we have a colleague who's going to be on maternity leave.
Okay. Well, I thought she said she could be on the, on the 27th, but as soon as Counselor Bellis is able to be back. But yes, if, if, if we have colleagues that are dragging the feet, dilly-dallying, delay, delay, they're not going to find a, a companion in me.
I just want to be specific. We're not going to portion out the veteran status coverage or religious status coverage from gender identity and sexual orientation, which I said earlier today, we all have. Everyone in this room has a gender identity and sexual orientation. It's not other people. But I don't want to delay so that we can find some machination where we either act like sex defines it all because we know that it doesn't. I just need, the trust has been broken, not with you, Counselor. This is the first time we're coming here.
Absolutely.
But with others who have done this before and asked for more time to change language and then it didn't happen. And then here we are.
So what I, what I would say to that, and specifically to our veteran community, stick with us and I, because I want to stick with you. So let's, let's-
I need you to stick with these folks over here, Counselor.
All right.
So if we're going to amend language, I, I just want to say, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to be-
Not just for you. I'm talking to everyone up here who's struggling.
I'm not trying to be duplicitous. I genuinely want to see every person in here protected. And so the-
Well, it sounds like the sponsor is being amenable. I, as I say often to her and to some of my other tolerant colleagues, there are better people than me. I'm very frustrated because we are using tactics to delay. So what I'm trying to get is accountability that if we're going to afford another delay, which it sounds like Counselor Bellis is supporting, and I want to support her.
I'm just doing the math of-
I want to make sure-
What kind of delay we're doing.
And I very much do want to name, it's not a secret that that was, one of the conversations is like, let's just go with veterans and then we won't have to do the thing that makes us very uncomfortable to do. So it's okay to be uncomfortable. We just heard there's people every day that this is a life or death situation. So I'm asking for a commitment for those of you who have asked for the compromise to delay, that you will not come back to us and separate out the classes, whatever they are.
I hope that's not directed at you.
It's not directed at you, Counselor. It's not directed at you. I know where you stand.
So-
I do know where you stand and I respect it. I'm saying, for people who want to continue to massage, please do not massage out the whole, holistic intent. I'm just amplifying what Counselor Bellis has said. Out of respect to Counselor Bellis, I will support whichever direction she wants to go on this, because I do hear that delay 90 days is still less than 180 days. So we can do incremental delays.
So Counselor Dr. Wright, you, you started just asking about, or making a statement about us, you know, involving her while she's on maternity leave, and I want to be very sensitive to that. So I just want to-
There's not leave from the council. It's okay.
Okay, okay. I, I just wanted to ask you again.
That's a whole other state policy issue. Yeah.
So Counsel, Counselor Bush, your motion was to put it on for August 27th. It sounds like we need to change that through a friendly amendment to September the 10th at 5:00 PM in this room. Yeah, we can, they can take care of all that internally.
But would, would we vote on the 27th for, for organs?
In committee on the 27th.
Committee on August 27th.
Okay.
Committee on September 10th. First reading on August 27th, second reading on September 10th.
But for clarification, so city attorney, we can, again, reiterate that we can waive council rules and vote on a first-
It requires also waiver of charter, which is a two thirds vote.
Yeah, if we choose to on the 27th.
So we're not doing first reading on the 27th and second reading on the 10th?
Yeah, we are.
That's what the motion is.
So why would we waive council rules?
I'm just saying that there are options that we can-
Yeah, we can also waive council rules to kill a vote on the first go around, which happened with another controversial vote. So I'm just amplifying the tactics, friends.
Okay. Any other, yes, ma'am?
I do just also want to assure, like, you know, to, this is supposed to colleagues, but also assuring constituents related to this, that if what happens through a council working group process is something watered down, that I'll be back here with basically this exact copy. So- this exact copy, so we can, we can do that. So I'm just naming, like, if, you know, like, I'm not giving up a commitment to actually doing something to the fullest intent of what this is supposed to be, um, and have no interest in letting it be watered down if there are things.
It's already watered down.
I, well, oh, yeah, I know, this is already the compromise one, I know, um, and, and I'm not, like, you know, in, in the council, to not interested in ad infinitum, again, delaying or continuing to water down, um, happy to engage in a good faith process with council colleagues, um, and then after that, if that's not what we end up with, like, on the outcome side, then we can just keep revisiting this every one hundred and eighty days as long as it takes.
Okay, so there's a motion to table that's on the floor. Please.
Chair, I have a.
Sir?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I missed. Um, if, the, the, the tabling takes precedence over the original motion, so if the motion to table passes, then we're done. If it does not pass, then the original motion is back on the floor. Okay, so the motion to table is what we're voting on, yes, tables it until September the tenth at five PM in this room. Um, please call the roll.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
No.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
No.
Counselor Bellis?
Fine.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes. Okay, so the matter is table?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we have a commitment of who's going to be on the working group?
Oh, yeah.
Or the tutoring session?
That's a good point. What did you say?
Or the tutor, tutoring session, I think that's more than, more of what it's going to be, but I think at the very least, we, we should have that. Who's going?
I feel like you need to be on the working group.
I said, yeah.
Okay.
Me and my, hopefully, super gay son, we'll see.
Yes.
You can bring my baby.
So, and Bush, Gilbert?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'll be on it, for sure.
Okay.
I'd like to be on it.
We can, we can.
We're going to have four.
We can have four, but then I think.
Do we pull draws now? I mean.
I think this would be a good path forward and we can involve, there's some legal experts out here paired with our own city legal that we can make sure at the table, um, and then make sure that it's robust committee discussion.
Okay, so those, those four on the committee, um, we need to thank you, Susan Miller, for sticking with us. Five D needs to be reconsidered, so Counselor Bush, this is that item relating to the sign in your district? Counselor Bush? So five D relates to that sign that is in your district? We just passed it, but we didn't add in those elements relating to the restrictions on the sign, so we're going to need to reconsider that item.
Yes.
And Susan is going to come tell us how we need to reconsider that.
Wait, we just passed five D and now we're doing a motion to reconsider five D?
Uh, I don't know if we, do we need to do the whole motion to reconsider?
And then make an amendment? Did you have an amendment?
I would recommend that, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to reconsider?
We have to reconsider five D.
Is there a second?
Second, okay, second, whatever.
Please call the roll.
What went?
Motion to Carol, Bush.
Reconsider five D.
Yep, and then, oh, wait.
I made the motion, Bellis seconded, so we can.
I second it, just Bellis isn't here.
Gilbert seconded, so we can call it back.
LDW and then Gilbert.
Got it. Okay. Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Who's she?
Who's she, Susan?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes. Okay, so we're, we're now at a place where we can consider five D.
So, this is, everyone's clear what we're, what item we're on? Okay, so Z seventy-eight fourteen, this is on the west of the southwest corner of Forty-first and Harvard. We talked last week about adding some sign restrictions to make sure that the digital display sign would be limited in, uh, to a monument sign and the size. So here are the additions, we worked with the applicant, I know she, she's left, but she was in agreement with these. So, uh, two things, freestanding signs shall be limited to monument-style signs and a maximum height of eight feet, and then the maximum display area of the dynamic display sign is a thirty-two square feet, so all of that combined, thirty-two square feet, monument sign, no more than eight feet. So those are the three components to the addition to the optional development plan.
Can I just say, move to approve the three amendments to the optional development plan as outlined by Susan Miller?
To approve five D with those modifications.
To improve five D with.
Modifications.
With those modifications. Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes. Uh, five D with the amendments are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much for sticking with us. Eight council items, A, councilors' announcements and reports on current community events, activities, efforts and concerns other than announcements and reports, no discussion will ensue. Anybody? Okay?
I, I do.
Yep.
Um, we are honoring Juneteenth this week, uh, it's actually tomorrow, but this weekend, I invite anyone who's interested to come out and celebrate during the Tulsa Juneteenth Festival down in the heart of Greenwood, uh, this weekend. Well, we've been celebrating all week, but, uh, the festival, uh, and concert will be on Friday and Saturday, so welcome all.
Okay, anyone else? B, resolution of the City of Tulsa stating an intention to appropriate CRF for encampment decommissioning and complimentary rapid rehousing programs, and C, consensus of the, of the council approving solicitation of donations and contributions for council District Two summer movie in the park and back-to-school bash. Do we have any speakers?
We have two speakers for eight B. Our first speaker is James Alexander, Jr.
Good evening, council. Oh, this is, uh, a wonder to me because when this first came up, the American Rescue Plan, I made a statement that every time this came up, I would get up, speak against it, and this is no, nothing different. Now, you taking this money supposedly and, uh, decommissioning, uh, intent, encampments. Now, the problem is that Tulsa has one of the highest, uh, ratings for, when you put out your house, and you talking about adding more people, first thing that comes to mind is where you going to put them? Because a couple of years ago, this was tried and it failed miserably because where they were put up, they were treated so badly and the people that worked there treat them even worse. That's a problem. Uh, so you using COVID money, relief funds? I think this is the wrong thing because I don't see it working one iota, not one iota do I see this working, because there's so much going on with housing. You going to put these people in independent housing? You going to put them in hotels? What are you going to do with these people? You don't, I know you won't answer, but everybody that's listening should think about where they going to put these people, and you have a huge amount of people that have been taken out of their homes and apartments. What's going to happen?
Next speaker, please. I'm guessing it's Mrs. Alexander.
Yes, Bernice Alexander.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any council discussion?
Move to approve items eight B and C.
Second, please call the roll.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?[1749.88]